How y'all doing?
What's up, Mr. Sayer?
Okay, alright, alright. What up, bro? We in D. I. D. C. Alright.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening. I'm Lacy, too, baby.
Hey, man.
How you doing?
Good, and you?
Cheese is undercover.
I can't believe it.
Okay, well, I'm kicking it. I did track when we did Z. B.
Good evening. Having City Council Public Hearing Agenda for June 27, 2023, 5:30 P. M. You've been given a list of rules that are attached in front of your agenda. When you step to the podium, please give your name and address. You will have three minutes to talk. Once you give your name and address, the clock will start. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Public Hearing Item Number One.
In ordinance to adopt the City of Hammond budget for fiscal year 2023 through 2024. In accordance with the procedures of Section 5-03 of the city's charter, Laura Hammett.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
This will be the final adoption of the FY 23-24 budget. Just a little recap of our process. May 9, 2023, council meeting, we introduced the budget, which is where you received your budget binders. On June 2, 2023, we had the Budget Work Session whereby we had quite a bit of discussion, very good discussion throughout the entire day. And then what you have in front of you is the result of all of those discussions. Any changes that were made to the proposed budget are in front of you on that spreadsheet. And so I think what we'll need to do, what we've done in the past, is you will have to go through each one of those items, either in groups, individually, however you so choose. But we will need to vote on those prior to the final adoption later tonight. If there's any changes or any additions, we'll have to talk about those during the public meeting, and they will go forward to the final adoption later.
Anybody have any questions or comments from the public? Anyone from the council?
Yes, I was looking at the capital projects, and I apologize for this being oversight, but I was looking at what was per district. And there's one that I would like to move forward. So it's on page 64. The west, it's a sidewalk project, West Morris Linden to Spruce, which is allocated for 132,000 for 23-24. I'd like to move that to 24-25. And the purpose of that is for another issue, which is on your drainage improvements. We have number seven on page 65, Green Lawn, 61,000, which is currently, in this budget, is 24-25. I want to move that up to 23-24. So it still leaves 71,000 that we don't need. But I know there's some other things that are proposed. And so I'd like to just push that back, the first thing, back a year and move up Green Lawn a year. There are some homes on Green Lawn that got flooded, and I think that was more important than a sidewalk project.
Councilwoman Gonzalez, what, give me the page of that?
Sure, yeah, page 64.
Okay. What number?
Number one, West Morris Linden to Spruce.
Okay.
Where it has 132, just pushing that 132 to the next fiscal year.
Okay.
And then on page 65, number seven, which is Green Lawn, some drainage work on Green Lawn, which is currently under this budget set for 24-25. I want to push that forward to 23-24 to get that taken care of this year. So it's 61,000, removing 132 and adding 61,000.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items?
Want to go through each of the amendments? I assume?
Yes.
Yeah. No one else has anything to add to this list unless they want to add it while we're going through?
Okay. So we start with number one? Or we just don't know?
Kind of trump number one, but yeah, number, now the second one, well, number one on our sheet would work, yeah. Natchez, Corbin to Live Oak becomes Harold, Natchez to Mooney. 146 remains in this year. There's no change.
No change, okay.
In money, but it's a change to the description. Is that right, Lacy?
That is correct.
Yeah, I tried to, and I apologize because I know we went through reiterations of different ways of viewing this. And the first thing that you got was all written out in text form, and I realized it might be easier for you all to see what we work with on the accounting side, which is the number side. And so that's the spreadsheet that you have in front of you. It should be in the same order of everything that we talked about at Budget Work Session and in the same order of what was sent to you earlier in the first email. So in the text form, it's the same order of things. It's just presented in a way that matches with the budget. So if you have any questions about that, but if it has no change, what we're looking at is the financial impact to our budget that we're about to adopt. So it would be to fiscal year 2024. So if it says no change, that means there's no addition or subtraction of budget money to that upcoming budget.
But we do need an amendment to make in the description change.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Wells, this is your district, this is one we talked about, you're good with the description change?
Yes, I'm fine with everything on there. Yes.
Alright.
So that's number one, right?
Yes.
Yes, number one, page 64.
Okay.
But did you tell them, everything she got on this here, it's a little bit better if you pull this your sheet in front of her?
Yeah.
I think this is a little, and we'll do this every year going forward now that we kind of have a format that works on a one-pager. It's really hard to think through how to make it fit so that we can all see what we're talking about. And Councilman Leon pointed out to me earlier today in very good fashion, these are just the changes. This is not, you still have your whole binder that describes in detail some of the other projects. So just so the audience understands as well, these are just the changes to what's proposed. It's not that we tossed all those and said, we're only doing these.
Okay, alright. Number two.
Number two was just to split the one project into two fiscal years. So you'll see in the first discussion of that, it says split into 175,000 for the upcoming fiscal year and then 250,000 for the next fiscal year of 2025. And I know this is a little confusing in the way it's written, but the total impact, the final impact of that, because we're taking out money and putting it in the next fiscal year, not the one that we're trying to pass, but on down the road, means that we gain back $250,000 in our budget pot to play with.
Okay.
And so Councilman Andrews, this is your district.
Right, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
And if you remember, we were doing that because of the state permit process.
Right, yeah.
And Chuck was pretty sure that we weren't even going to need all those, that first.
First round.
Immediately, we'd budget them for the next time.
Capital Project Number Three, Timber Lane.
This was a request from Councilman Divitorio to move forward the project from one fiscal year, 2026, into 2025, but it does not affect our immediate fiscal year that we're talking about, which is 2024. So there's no financial money change on this project, but it does move it forward in terms of priority.
Alright, you fine, alright with that saying?
Yep.
Okay. Number four, Latto Lane.
This is a similar effort to move forward the 180,000 for this project. Also requested by Councilman Divitorio to keep those two together in terms of the time period on when they would be addressed. But there is no change to the immediate fiscal year that we're working on, 2024. This does move it forward in priority.
Same on that one?
Yep.
Same?
Mm-hmm.
Capital Project 13, number 13 here, First Avenue and Mary's Alley?
This was to keep the $157,000 that was originally proposed in the budget that was put out and that was published online. It's just to clarify that and make sure that we know. So Councilman Wells, this is a project that would go forward with this budget that we're adopting. We would keep that money right now active.
We wouldn't need an amendment for that because it shows it right here.
It does, but we're trying to make sure that it's clear so that we don't have any back and forth.
But if we did, if we were timed to vote on this and we did an amendment, that wouldn't be clear, right? So.
It just says that it stays in this, like, it's just a clarity.
It's as proposed.
It's kind of like the renumbering.
So no change?
Yeah, it's no fiscal, it's no money change.
And on this here, on First Avenue, I would like before we do any work to get a clear understanding with me and the engineer before any work is performed on the street.
Of the scope of work?
Yes.
Capital Project Number 16 here, Mooney Avenue, at Mississippi Street to Palmetto.
This was to change the amount of money that was allocated for this project. Chuck, the city engineer, said that this one could come in at a reduced cost. I think Councilman Wells and the city engineer had a conversation about this project and about the scope of it. And so this moves it also forward into 2024, which is the immediate budget year that we're talking about. So this is a change of adding $250,000 back into the budget from the fund balance.
Okay. Capital Project Number 18, Woodridge North Outfall.
This is moving forward a project for Councilman Leon's district at his request to move it forward from fiscal year 2026 into 2025.
To be clear, it was, when I had talked to Chuck, it was to be, it was to be in that, in 2025.
Okay, so this was to make sure it got straight.
This was a, it was just, it was just an error on his part, putting it two years out instead of one.
Gotcha. There is no change, though, to the upcoming budget of 2024 with this one.
Okay. Eight, Mooney Avenue, South Morrison Boulevard.
This is to move forward a project in Councilman Wells' district from the fiscal year 2026 into 2025. But there's no financial change to the current fiscal year that we're talking about, 2024.
Okay.
It would just move it forward in priority.
Nine.
This one is to correct the numbering on the projects that come after number 21B. We had those misnumbered, and so it's just to correct that numbering. There's no change on the dollars allocated for those.
Ten.
This is to add a project into this upcoming fiscal year, 2024. It's to add the connection of Carolyn to Top Hat for $80,000, and it's in your district, Councilman. So this is an addition of that 80,000, that's why you see it in that layer column.
Okay. Eleven. Was that a, was there a street already there, or is that? It's two streets that run.
Two streets, yeah.
And trying to connect them, so buses and ambulances and all, they could get around to them. Right now, it's problems with being able to turn around at the end of the street if somebody, a large vehicle or something has to go down in there. So just trying to connect those two streets together. Okay. Okay, eleven, I'm sorry.
Okay. This is moving forward the Natchez Street Extension Project from fiscal year 2026 to 2025. So it moves it up a year in terms of priority. It is no change to the fiscal impact of this budget year that we're about to pass, 2024.
Okay. Twelve.
This one has three parts to it. And this was our best understanding of what had been discussed at the Budget Work Session. But I would advise that we gain clarity on all three pieces of this. And there are some different options as to the city council, what you could do with these. This is the discussion of the pot of money that is allocated to our nonprofit partners who do not have necessarily direct services. And in the discussion with the Grants Committee, there was somewhat of a consensus reached that both CASA and Crime Stoppers offered more direct services to city services. And so there was discussion to move the money out of this to go ahead and place money for CASA. That was 25,000 was what they were awarded last year. That is up to the city council in terms of whether you want to continue that same award amount. The second part is to move the money out of the pot for Crime Stoppers because their tip line and their prevention strategies are based on the population of the parish. And based on our population of Hammond, the allocation required of Hammond is $11,107. So that's a part two that you would want to discuss about whether you want to move and reserve that fund. The third part would be to remove the remaining funds in that line item, in that pot. And there was lots of discussion about pushing those over into capital projects or having those be available for capital projects. Your other option as a council is to just leave the money there and allocate it later in the year or just leave it there and it goes back to the general fund balance or move it at some other time of the year into a specific project. So if you zeroed it out, if you took the money and put 25,000 towards CASA, put 11,107 towards Crime Stoppers, and then removed the remaining money, it would be subtracting out of the budget 143,893. That's why you see that in that column. So that's a pulling that money out of the budget and putting it back over here saying, okay, do we want to put it somewhere else?
Got a couple of questions on the Crime Stoppers. How much money was used last year?
11,107.
So they used everything last year?
Yes, sir.
Alright, now the 25,000, that truly got me puzzled there.
For the CASA?
Yes.
That is the folks who do, just to remind you, if you already know this, please forgive me and just say, I already know that part. They do the interviews with children who have been in abuse situations or who have witnessed a trauma, whether that's a shooting, whether it's something else that happened at their school or in their home, something that has caused a traumatic situation for them, and they need counseling through that. They conduct those interviews that are then later used in court. So right now, our police don't do those interviews. They may talk to the child, but this is a specialized service that CASA uses to help crime in our community, to help those children recover from that.
Okay, as of right now, and not from the city, how much have they received already in federal grant money?
I could not tell you that off the top of my head. We could get that information from Rob Carlisle, who is their director, or we could look at what they had submitted last year for their whole total package. I'm trying to think of another way to get it faster.
Yeah, because see what's going on, and it's just me. I had agreed, and I had brought it up, that I didn't want to give no nonprofit, no money this year. And I said that for the simple fact, well, I got to talk about it in my area, Central African Heritage Center. Last year, we gave them, what, 49, 50,000?
50,000.
50,000, okay, this is in my district. So if I took that out, it's something would be wrong with me if I sit here and give it to somebody else. And it's just my opinion. The Children Museum, how much we gave them last year?
I think 90,000.
90,000, okay, we took that out. So if we taking stuff out, I don't see why we sit, you know, and you just, like you said, the committee agreed to give them this. But yet, if we taking it out, we need to take it out. Crime Stoppers, I have no problem with.
Understood.
Because if anything, if we can increase Crime Stoppers, I'd rather for more people to call and tell what's going on. But this one here, I have a problem with, you know. As far as the service wise, I'm through.
I was just going to say, Councilman Wells, one thing with CASA is they do the forensic interviews when we have children that are abused. The court accepts their interviews to where an officer does not have the, I guess, education, doesn't have the, I guess, the titles behind it and all that to be able to prosecute somebody or criminal. That's why we use the CASA. They come in and do all the forensic interviews for our juveniles. The only time our officers actually question a juvenile, which is part of the court and part of the way that the judges have set up for us, is if it's an immediate right then and there and we have to get the information. If not, we're not to question them, we have to bring them for a forensic interview after the fact.
Well, I'm quite sure all the nonprofits got a darn good reason why they need the money. So that's why I say that is, if I'd have knew you had anything to do with it, I wouldn't open my mouth about it. But I must still say.
I don't have anything to do with it, I'm just explaining what they do.
Well, you walked up, sir, so apparently you had something to do with it.
I don't normally speak, but.
Your name in it?
I'm sorry, my name is Lieutenant Jamie Hawke. I work for the Hammond Police Department, been working there for 27 years. As a previous juvenile officer several times and supervisor, CASA is imperative. It's for the, it's for our community, it's for our children that are molested from anywhere, it's from the ages of four years old to 16 years old. It's, that is probably 90% what is done with that service. These children also receive other services where they're also counseled after they've been abused. I mean, this is a very serious thing, and I'm sorry, I'm getting upset because this is very, very, very emotional for this. So what happens is, is these kids go in for these forensic interviews, and it's used in court systems. And if you've been there, and I have, to see this, you would not say that it's not important. CASA is very important in this community. So I encourage you, please do not take their money away.
I may have misunderstood, but I think everybody was jumping the gun. I don't think anybody said it wasn't important or anything. And I think the question was raised on where, what other funding were they getting for, like, grants? Since it's not, you know, federally grants, would they get more money? Because some nonprofits don't have a large source of funding from different deals, so nobody. So we already know what CASA does, at least I do anyways, and I'm pretty sure Councilman Wells would probably know. So we know the importance of that organization is. We were, you know, I think the question was raised was just kind of what money were they getting from other funding sources? Just out of curiosity, to see what's going on as far as the funding goes. Because originally, they were asking, I think, about 10,000 when we first started, five or 10, I think they were getting. And, you know, we've upped it, and we actually, and I was, Councilman Wells and the rest of the council were all supportive of increasing those funds in previous years to get it to 25, even when they were asking for 10,000. And five, and we actually upped it. So I just want to make sure that, you know, for some people come up here and start jumping, that was completely, completely, nobody said it was not important.
Not saying that, I don't know about any, or anything. I'm just asking you, please don't take it away from them. Because, you know, we started with that service and they were in a little broken down house. Police Department raised money for them also to help build that service. I mean, law enforcement all over the place. We have worked hard to get that agency going, and we're, I would beg you, please don't take anything away from them. Thank you.
Ma'am, one minute. Look, let me say this here. This is very important to you, right? African American Heritage Center is very important to me.
Yes, sir.
And this is what I did. And I have to go back to the community and explain why I did this. When I first got up there, we was giving them 25,000. I moved it up to 50,000. So when I leave here, I still got to go back to my community and explain why I'm taking the 50,000 from them. And if you notice, I was looking for my book. Last year, we gave out for nonprofits, how much did we give out last year?
About 200, 225, I think, 225, actually. It was 175 prior, and we went up to 225. And so, yeah.
So I'm going to say 225 is what we gave out last year. And for y'all raising money for the house or whatever, I think that's good. I have nothing against it, but it was just my request, not the rest of the city councilmen. I requested that I didn't want to give no nonprofit money. And like I told you, when I leave here, I have to go back to my community. I just asked.
I just want you to understand, your community and all the communities in the city, all these children, they depend on that service severely.
Yeah, well, like, again, I'm going to say this.
It's the same children that go to that Heritage Center.
Yeah, the same kids that go to the Children Museum, they need the money. So everybody need the money, so we're not taking it from them. I don't know if you was here, earlier I asked, how much do they have in their budget this year? That's the question I, how many people been giving them money? See, this.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking you because you're talking about a Heritage Center, and you're talking about children who are being molested and abused. And this is a very important situation that goes to court. And without these forensic interviews, we can lose these cases in court. That's how imperative and important that system is. And unless you've worked in that division, it's very emotional.
Oh, yeah, and I believe you, but the thing about it, though, is, is anybody in here for the Black Heritage Center? See, what I'm saying is, now you see, is anybody in here from the Children Museum? We have no representatives in here. So what I'm saying is, if everybody come up here like you, God knows, guess what I say? Give them 50,000. No, 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 hold on. No, 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 hold up, hold up. This is what I would say, give them fifty thousand, 'cause you know what? You very emotional, you passionate about it. God knows, I have nothing against. What you're saying, five of my, five of my family members experienced that. So, and guess what? I cry all the time, but still in all, they not receiving the service. So it's nothing against what you talking about, but if everybody come up here doing what you did, we'll go back to two-hundred and twenty-five thousand that we gonna give away. And that's all I was saying, so it's nothing personally, and you know both of us on the same team. So when it come to you, boom, I jump out the bed and say what you need me to do.
I appreciate it.
And you know how we are, but this is just one thing that I'm looking at, just like I said, I was concerned on how this got picked and how this number come about, when we were sitting here saying, I was sitting here saying, we want to reduce, we want to reduce, because you know what? District Three is lacking so much. And you been in Hammond a long time, you know how much we're lacking. And the problem is, I'm trying to find a way where District Three can start looking like some of the other districts in some fashion, way. That's all I'm looking for, and didn't know it at first, but District Three is, and for your record, how long you been working for the city?
Yesterday, twenty-seven, I'm starting my twenty-eighth year.
Okay, congratulations, twenty-eight years. District Three is seventy years behind the city, seventy years. So I know we're not gonna catch it up in one night, but I'm trying to get it where it look presentable when you come through there and the rest of the people come through there. That's all I'm saying. So if I had everybody from District Three come holler what they need, what they need, real stuff, we looking at five million dollars that the city will have to put in District Three right now, tonight. But everybody not up here, you know what I tell them? Be patient. Give me time, give me time. So that's what I'm dealing with.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And I think that's where the problem is, trying to say whose organization is more important than others, giving them, giving them the funds, which, you know, everybody's organization's important. So, you know, at some point, though, when different districts need infrastructure improvements here and there, and then, you know, you gotta look at everybody, and, you know, just like the Children Discovery Center, I mean, kids are important also, and so they were on a step-down plan, and I think they were gonna try to get them off eventually, every year, reducing it by ten or twenty, ten thousand or so. So they actually had a plan. They were the only group out of all of them that had a plan to reduce. Every other organization was going up and down, up and down, no structure. So at some point, they all need structure of some sort, because you can't fund every nonprofit that exists. The Crime Stoppers, yeah, I mean, I think that one right there probably should have been kind of in its own separate little class, kind of set aside, because, you know, I don't, you know, I mean, it's based on the population and, you know, it's important, that's very, you know, important as well, too. But who's to say which one is more important than others, 'cause they're all important, but we have to have some kind of, some kind of guidelines on there and seeing where their funding's coming from. Some organizations may have a lot more sources to get funding that other ones don't, and I think that's kind of where my, you know, what I was looking to hear whenever, you know, Councilman Wells brought up about the federally, you know, grants, how much were CASA getting from there? 'Cause they may been getting a lot of money from there, and that's good. I hope they continue getting more, and, you know, if the other organizations couldn't qualify for some of those grants, then that wouldn't be comparable about the funding ratios from the city versus other ones. So that, that's kind of would have been a, you know, important, you know, to see which, but yeah.
I could, I wanted to point out for our Nonprofits Grants Committee, which we all appointed people to that committee, they've done a lot of work, and I pulled up their recommendations that they presented to us last month, and we've talked about this multiple times, but I bring it up because I think it's a very important point, that in last year, we did this, where we pulled out direct services, where we, and so their recommendation is delineate funding for direct services versus supplemental services. Agencies who are currently operating under city funding for direct services should fall under separate funding than these other nonprofits, or any nonprofit that wants to apply. Examples that are given is the Council on Aging, which we know is the bus, Crime Stoppers, which is the tip line, CASA, and Humane, Tangi Humane Society, which is animal control. Also Animal Control, which is also under here through the parish. And last year, if I recall correctly, we funded as a separate line item and not within this pot for the nonprofit grant, the animal shelter, the Council on Aging, the Veterans Services. So those were delineated services according to our last budget, at least that's what it says here. And then we put funding into just a catch-all bucket of nonprofit partners. And last year, we funded it at two-twenty-five. I don't think we spent all that. And this year, it's proposed for one-eighty. Obviously, we've done this for five years now, it's been a lot, there's lots of conversation. I think it makes sense for us to leave this one-eighty sitting here and defer that issue for, you know, the Grants Committee, who we appointed these people and they did all this work, they came up with something, let's see how that, let's let them implement that. They gave us an application, they gave us a rubric for making awards, and let's go through that process. And then anything that's delineated as direct services should be a separate item as we, yeah, it's in the proposed budget for those three items to be separate from that pot of nonprofit money.
So what you saying, leave the money in there?
For now, yeah, and let the Grants Committee, you know, let's get the application out that they proposed to us, let people submit it, see if, according to the rubric of what the Grants Committee gave us on how they determine who is entitled to something or how they are entitled to it, then they can apply, and let the Grants Committee do their job, which is to grade these applications. And it's obviously a nice step down, which is forty-five thousand dollars less than last year.
Yeah, I see we're gonna have a problem here, because see, if we leave it like that, and I thought the majority of us kind of ruled on taking all these nonprofits out, so we leave the money like that, now, we might well call them same groups and start back giving them the money. So I don't think it's a good idea to leave the money there, because guess what? Just for an example, Isaiah, Isaiah got a nonprofit group, and Isaiah say, he come with the forms to the city, and to the group, and the group sit there and tell Isaiah want twenty-five thousand dollars. Now we looking at, do we give Isaiah the twenty-five thousand dollars? And Isaiah see, and he in the meeting, he hear we got a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in the pot. Now, once again, District Three gonna come up short, okay? The Black Heritage Center, okay, I didn't talk to them. Nah, I might well call them and tell them, we got a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in the pot. So by us leaving it in the pot, see what you gonna create by leaving it in the pot? Now, this is just my opinion now. So we got, what's the name of the group, Brandy?
UMX.
UMX, okay. She was new last year receiving money, okay? She turning her application tomorrow, saying she need eighty thousand dollars. So by you leaving it in the pot, we still gonna create a mess. By taking it out the pot, can't nobody come up here next week, week after next, next month, two months from now, can't nobody come up here if the money not left in the pot? That's why I disagree with leaving that money in the pot. We gonna sit here, get this money away right now, get the money away, take the rest of the money out the pot, because I can call six people, look, the city got a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, ready to give it away. Fill your application out, don't put my name on there, 'cause you ain't gonna get the money, and get ready. That's what I say.
That was the purpose of having the committee. I mean, the committee, we asked the committee to put together, you know, to put together a system. They worked very hard, they put together a system, they did all that work, and now we gonna say, oh, well, thanks, but we decided not to do that.
Well, we didn't even have a committee for a while, some, you know, we proposed one, y'all don't even want to have the committee meet hardly anymore.
Well, we didn't. Y'all wanted it, and you got one.
And I kept it together to try to do it, yeah.
Y'all wanted it, and you got...
To try to improve it, yeah.
So now you don't want to use it?
To try to improve it, the system.
But Steve, okay, now we say the committee, and we don't need to go back and forth, you know, 'cause I wasn't prepared to go back and forth with nobody today. But the committee last year, what they went up to, two-hundred and twenty-five thousand, did we give out the two-hundred and twenty-five thousand? You know, we didn't agree on it. So now, we looking at, so, and then we got the Charter Review Committee, so let's not talk about committees, look at all the work they done, and that's very quiet, and that's not costing no money. So when you, when you pick people on these committees, they have a job to do. And everybody be picked on these committees, we know it don't go everybody way, but this is free money, taxpayers' money. That's all I'm saying. So it's not for us to go back and forth. I just trying to find a way to reduce the budget. You want to get a bridge done, I want to get a drainage done, he want to get a sidewalk done, he want to get a bridge done.
Lighting, whatever.
No, no, I'm just using it as an example. So that's why I say that. But if we leave the money in the pot, you got people gonna start to come in looking for the money. So it's not, no, everybody volunteer on these committees. We know that. We know what happened. So it's not taking nothing away from the committee, but think about last year, two-hundred and twenty-five thousand. So look how much you reducing it. You know, all of us want something. I definitely need things in my district. That's all I'm saying.
Councilman Wells, I remember you, I remember at our budget session, you wanting to zero out the balance for the nonprofits, but my question is, what about the bus, the Veterans Services, the animal shelter? Are we, are you proposing to zero out even the ones where there is a certain amount given based on population or based on tip line, or, I'm just trying to be clear.
No, no.
Are you taking everything away, or is it just those ones that came from that pot of two-twenty-five?
I think it was those that come from that two-twenty-five, but I'm not, I don't have a list, so I'm not gonna even talk about that.
They're right there.
Well, the two-twenty-five, who all on the list?
It is, the Children's Museum, the Urban Market...
What, what the list said? I'm saying, I don't have it in front of me.
It's in the budget.
She's referring, I guess, to the Budget Works binder.
Yeah, but I don't have that with me.
Yeah.
I don't have that with me, so...
He was talking about on his sheet right here.
Yeah, I'm talking about on his sheet, but Councilwoman Gonzalez, this, I'm not trying to debate with you or nothing, and I'm darn sure not running for office. I was running for office, I said it in to you, we'll give them all some money, but by me not running for office, I don't have to go back and forth, and that's what I was saying. I'm not gonna go back and forth with nobody for the bus. We done already gave them that money, right?
No.
So, well, they gonna get it tonight, come on now, so don't do that. Everything that people been asking for, that money pretty much already allocated to give them.
But Crime Stoppers is not, which is the tip line. That's what, that's what I'm trying to point out.
Okay.
Certain things are not allocated.
Crime Stopper, I said, get Crime Stopper the money. Not one time I said, don't get Crime Stoppers the money. Hell, I need crime solved in my community. I got a nephew been dead three years, and yet, three or four years, and yet, we still to find out who killed him.
I'm not trying to...
No, 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 but I'm just saying, it's not, it's nothing to go back and forth about, but you know what, though? I supposed to be smart, let you talk.
All I'm asking is, in this budget currently, if we want to make, we're right now working on amendments, right? So if we want to make an amendment, currently, Crime Stoppers doesn't have anything. You said you want Crime Stoppers, too, so that would have to be a budget amendment. If you want to zero out the balance for the nonprofit partners, which is currently at one-eighty, that has to be a budget amendment. I'm not trying to debate, I'm just trying to clarify, what are those amendments gonna look like?
Taking the money from all of them, the ones that we have on here, only thing I asked about, the twenty-five thousand dollars, then I asked about, show me other people that done gave them money. Let me see that, you know, how much have they received, how much they got in their budget right now? That's what I asked for, because see, you know what? Now that you going down this hill road, okay, how much that was? A hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Okay, put it on the garbage bill. Put that hundred and forty-three thousand dollars on the garbage bill. That's what I want to do with it.
What's a hundred and forty-three thousand?
The hundred and forty-three thousand dollars remaining.
On C, he's referring to if it has equals one-forty-three.
Oh, I'm not working on that, yeah, I see.
Yeah, well, see, see, you looking on something different.
I'm working on the actual budget.
I know that, and I'm working on the budget. I'm saying, take the hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, put it back in the general fund, take it out, 'cause it gonna create a problem later on. We know this. Every last one of us got nonprofits that we'll love to support. The mayor got nonprofit, Ms. Lacy got nonprofit, every last one of us got nonprofit we'll love to support. The whole idea, before the mayor got in office, been trying to reduce, for twelve years, he been trying to reduce this. Now we got an opportunity to reduce it, but we not gonna go nowhere, and we keep going back and forth. And God knows, I never put nobody on it, because guess what? It's time to reduce it. It's time to reduce it. I'm not saying, agent, give them the money, let them drive the bus, Crime Stoppers, give them the money. If they need forty thousand dollars, give Crime Stoppers the money. So I'm not saying that, hell, I'm the one who told them last year, okay, gas went up, everything went up. What did I say? Give it to them, give it to them. I said that all last year. This year, I'm saying, take it from them, take it from them.
Can I make him a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
So my understanding, when we heard from the committee, was to take the direct services out of all of the rest of the nonprofits. The dog catchers, the Crime Stoppers, CASA, which is part of crime, which is part of the justice system, going to court, those is what was suggested to take out of this pool of money. And for the rest of the nonprofits, and you say, I have one, well, we raise our own money, and that's what the goal was, like you said, was to get everybody down to raising their own money. And the good Lord knows, the Children's Museum had a lot of money from the day they were, of their inception. It's time, as you said, and you wanting to put dollars everywhere. So if you listen to what the council said, the group that studied this, CASA, Crime Stoppers, and the Dog Pound, and what was the fourth one?
Bus.
A bus.
Bus, yeah.
Those were to be taken out of nonprofits, and then it'd be a direct line in the budget that we fund. But CASA, as she said, is, that's a very important thing for the children and parents, mothers, fathers abused, and they actually go as far as taking this to court. That is a, that's a necessity for our community, big time. You hear the police officers mentioning that. So the committee suggested CASA, Crime Stoppers, and the other two to be taken out of the nonprofits, a direct line that we fund, and the other ones, you know, whatever.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that would be a good idea, but now, now the Children Discovery Center, whenever they had that agreement, what was the agreement reduced to? Was it, was it a continuous to the zero balance or number? What was the final...
Every year, every year was a different conversation, but the goal was to go down ten thousand dollars a year.
So that was agreement? Agreement was, on paper, was ten thousand dollars per year? I thought we had an agreement or something with them.
We have a CNA, a CA, sorry, and I think that's...
And that was to go down to zero or flatten, or a reduced low number?
It just specified out to get them down to fifty, because it was only going, it was like a five-year plan.
Okay.
But each year, that CEA, along with all the other agreements, state that this is a one-time funding allocation, this does not commit the city to future funding years, because the budget is unknown.
Yeah, 'cause I know they were on an agreement reducing every year, but I don't think everyone else was on a, on an agreement to reduce every year.
Correct.
It was not, so, so that's what I was getting at. So my only concern about that was, was that, we talked about children with CASA, I mean, that's another children-orientated, you know, organization as well, too. So I'm all for getting everybody to get on their own feet, but I think, you know, it was one of the only ones who had an agreement to reduce yearly, unlike any other ones. So, you know, I, you know, I mean, I think they were on the right path with the agreements to get them, to get them on theirselves, but that was the only thing that I had a little concern about, because, you know, I don't, I don't know if they going from eighty or ninety to zero, whatnot, you know, when they already had the agreement made several years ago, I'm hoping they're working towards honoring their agreement to do that, and if that's the case, then that's, that's great, you know, I mean, wish everyone, you know, would, you know. So, uh, but, uh, but yeah, so that's, that's the only thing right there. But I mean, as far as taking the other ones out, I mean, yeah, I mean, Crime Stoppers affects everybody, you know, with, and it's based on the population and different things, and, you know.
Please don't associate CASA with that museum down, two streets down, it's not the same.
I'm, I'm not associating, even comparing the two, I'm just saying that it's another, it's another organization that actually, you know, gives kids something to do, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying anything, I, I, let me make this clear, I would never, 'cause this is what it's gonna take out of this meeting, they gonna say that we, uh, somehow we, we're anti-CASA. That's not the case, so I want to make that clear. 'Cause way that, that comment made, we have continued increasing CASAS. They came to us with ten thousand dollars one year, and I think Councilman Wells said, why don't you give them another five or ten? And we all supported, the whole council supported, so, or maybe she, maybe Councilman, but I know I did. So, we never have said anything negative about CASA, and was not one-hundred percent, I, let's say me, I was one-hundred percent supportive of CASA throughout every year. So, I'm not comparing the two, I'm just saying that for some reason, you have been eyeing on target, targeting on a children museum since I've been elected, about just taking everything from them, and then everybody else giving them more money throughout the years. So, that thing that you had tagged them on, it end up costing more money given to everybody else. So, that's what really happened. So, I'm not comparing Children Museum to, to CASA.
The nonprofits eventually need to raise their own money. That's the consensus that we, I've had since I've been in office. These other organizations are direct line item that should be funded, because it is a direct service to the community. It's not going with your children and having a great time at the museum, and seeing the cultural art that the, the Heritage Museum has, which is important to the community. It's not going on Cypress Street with your children and having a good time. Most of the exhibits are, are provided by companies that build these exhibits. CASA and these other things are direct line, the buses, that's what the study committee said, take out of the nonprofit that y'all. Now, if you don't want to fund any of them, even the Children's Museum know that was a possibility this year that was gonna happen.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, I think we're on the same page about taking those other ones out of that, that's not, that's not our, uh, you know, issue between here, taking those out. So I don't know if you got misunderstood me or not, but there was nothing, we're on the same page of that. My only concern was that, you know, with the children, other ones, and that's where you start opening a door up, and saying, okay, so the Children Museum, is that more important than African American Museum? Or is that more important than, uh, a couple of organizations, CMX, or whatever? So, then you start doing that. But whenever you see a kids and school buses lined up all the time over there at that place, you know, you know, that, that's good to see from all over the place, and there are all children in there. And hopefully, they can, they grow and continue to, you know, provide more services to the children, so. And they were on a step-down plan, so nobody else was on a step-down plan. So, that was something that, if y'all were doing step-down plans, everybody should have been on step-down plans.
And for the record, CASA, let me say this here for the record, uh, for two years, I increased what they asked for. For two years, I did that, and got a little feedback. So, I just asked a simple question, how they was picked this year? That's all I asked, how they was picked? And they come from this to that, to the chief running up to the podium, I just asked how they was picked versus everybody else. That's all I said, I didn't say, don't give them no money, I just said, how they was chosen, who picked this? And ever since I received my binder, I've been wondering. And so, tonight, I got an answer. That's all I asked, so it's, but, that hundred and forty-three thousand, I do not want to leave that in the pot, because it gonna create a problem. You see, now, we shouldn't even still be talking about this, you know, it gonna create a problem. That's all I, that's all I was saying, and really, Councilwoman Gonzalez, that's, I, that's all I was telling her, that that hundred and, that hundred and forty-three thousand remaining, gonna create a problem if we leave it there. That's all I was saying. So, it's nothing about CASA, it's nothing about Crime Stoppers, it's nothing about that. If Crime Stoppers in there, I'm not worried about no population or none of that, all that sound good, if we can reduce the crime, if we can find people. The police call my phone all the time, asking me questions, and about people in the community. And guess what? They'll tell you, every time they call me, I tell them, who did what, don't care who it is. I do that, hell, not one time I got a dollar. I want my community to be safe. Now, since we talking, I want cameras on the street, so they can see for theyself who doing stuff wrong. So, that's all I'm saying, but, yo, you know what? I just said, that hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, I would love to get it to put cameras on in our District Three, to reduce crime. That's it for me. So those services, we're gonna leave them as direct services.
Well, these are, are we, we're gonna be voting on this.
Right.
In a little bit, so I guess we were just going, going over that, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Thirteen.
This was a proposal that was discussed at Budget Work Session, to, um, look at other options for the animal control, uh, within our city. And we did have a conversation with the parish, um, since they have the Animal Control Office right now. Um, their office can continue to function, um, with or without these funds, but it would mean that all Hammond calls would, would not be answered by them. So, then we looked at alternative services to that, and the suggestion is to handle with city staff, um, with police officers who are already hired. We would just change some of their duties to go towards that, um, to have a quality-of-life officer, who is dedicated to animal control, to elderly services, to HOA meetings, to other outreach within the community, and special events, um, and other services like that. And to also have a partnership with the Humane Society, who would guarantee four kennel spaces for animals that needed to be picked up. Um, their partnership would be at a, at a much lower rate than what we are currently paying to the parish animal control. Um, so, those are, again, some options. Um, the, uh, contracting services, we don't have a firm number on that. Um, so, if you want to just leave the money there, but specify which direction you would like to go, I think that might be helpful. Or your other option is to move the funds into the Tangi Humane line item, but again, with the understanding of clarification of city staff working on this, or this being an in-house solution, rather than relying on the parish animal control office.
Well, I guess, I don't know, maybe I, I didn't make myself clear that day, but what, what I was saying was, was that, I think a discussion needed to be made on seeing what, um, any improvements that could be made with what, uh, the animal control does now. They may not have any improvements, and that may be just what it is. But paying sixty thousand dollars to have a call come in at five in the morning, and they're, and they're closed, or on the weekends, and they only take cats and dogs, you know, I mean, if there's snakes, or, or horses, or, or whatever it may be, in, in the, uh, in the city, uh, raccoons, or medillas, or whatever. Um, you know, I think they need to have a more, a wider, wider range of, of what pets, um, you know, what animals they take in, and an actual twenty-four-seven call to have a service, you know, on, you know, whenever they're, they're out. I mean, people at work, when they at home, the weekends, you know, if there's a dog, vicious dog, I mean, you call them, they're gonna be closed. So I mean, um, I, you know, so my thought was looking at the con, you know, contract with them, or, or organ, well, it's with the parish, but the organization, you know, what the chart looks like as far as if, what would it take to get a, a more, um, range of service availability from them on, on, on a daily basis? And if, and if not, then I mean, you know, I mean, I think that's the concern with my, the people in my residence, is on weekends, on after-hours, when they're closed, and then the two, only the cats and the dogs, pretty much, they take. And so I think they need to offer a little more, uh, a, a little more bright, you know, a little more open to all animals, animal control, all animals, and, uh, and, and, you know, and, and somebody on call for the weekends, or, or mornings, or nights.
They do not provide additional animals.
I think the suggestion of using the Tangi Humane came from our officers who said, and ones that would step up, the better option is using the officers, and maybe some can, will come up and talk about it, that it works out well with the Tangi Humane. They come out when needed, and we have certain officers that want to work with this as well. And I think it would work well for us, from what I'm understanding.
Councilman Divittoria, just to talk about the on-call thing, Lieutenant Janine Cruz is gonna be the quality-of-life officer. Um, that's one of the things her and I have had extensive conversations about, is, is often times where she couldn't get assistance, uh, with the current situation that we're in. Um, I did speak with the Tangi Humane Society, um, we will have full access to their facility, um, they'll offer four cages to us, which will be reserved for us, to where if we do need a dog or an animal picked up on the weekend, um, two things will happen to they. Lieutenant Cruz, um, has agreed to be on-call and come out to handle those things. If she happens to be on vacation, then the Tangi Humane Society will be the one that'll, uh, come out and actually, uh, fill in for that spot. So, uh, this is actually, should be a better option, as far as having full coverage, 'cause I was, one of the complaints that a lot of the officers were given was, uh, that they didn't have any other options on the weekends, and so on and so forth. So, uh, Lieutenant Cruz has really jumped on board with this, she's got some things worked out. Her unit is gonna be given, uh, certain things to carry in it, to be able to catch the dogs and the animals, and do the best that we can to try to secure them in a facility. Once it gets secured over at Animal, uh, Tangi Humane, then they will handle all the adoption things, and, and all that stuff. But it'll give us an opportunity to have somebody, an officer, who's actually handling quality-of-life issues, and be able to transport the animals over there.
And handling a wider range of animals.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't know if I'm, you know, excited about more liability, the city ta, taking on more liabilities with wrangling animals up, and getting injured, and, and everything else, as opposed to a third party somewhere where.
Pretty much with them when they're doing it.
And, and I mean, well, I mean, I, I don't know, I think, I don't know, I, my thing is, they need to be a twenty-four-seven, to my, where I'm at, my issue is, need a twenty-four-seven access, and they need a, then they need to, uh, when you call by the animal, if somebody in the city calls by the animal, they need to say, okay, sounds good, let me get it. Not, well, what is it? And, oh, well, we don't get this, we don't get that, that doesn't solve the problem. So, but that's, that's all I care about, is having better service to the people of Hammond, and making sure that, uh, if it's on a weekend, or at night, they call, they can call somebody, and they can come get the animal of whatever species it may be. And, and, and that's it. And if animal control can't do that, or the other ones, or whatever, we just need to find somebody to do that. So, I don't know about, you know, but.
This is the option.
Yeah.
So, Ms. Lacy, so, and it's just an example, at three o'clock in the morning, one of the police officer, uh, come get the dog.
Yes, sir. The idea is that this would be a call-out officer, that, so at three o'clock in the morning, if they got the call from somebody else on shift, from one of the dispatchers, to come and get the dog.
Okay, and on the weekends, too?
Yes, sir.
So, and, and I heard him say several times about the horse, we know the story about the horse, so. So, you know, I know they got some real cowboys and everything. So, you think we can get a cowboy out to come get the horse, if we have a problem with a horse? Yeah. Okay, 'cause, uh, 'cause, uh, you know, 'cause I know what, I know what he concerned about, 'cause we all know the issue about the horse and stuff. And even with the horse, if the horse down somebody property, or in the road, or whatever, you know, the city got the equipment to remove the horse.
And we have an individual who's been taking snakes for years now, with the city, and he's with the city, Jimmy.
So, we're gonna, uh, so you're proposing a, a hotline number, pretty much, that's gonna be a number, that's gonna be designated for the people to call.
Radio room will handle it.
So, all the calls gonna go, you know, by the animal to, to the HPD?
So that hotline number, huh?
That's generally where they, they come through.
From that hotline number, 'cause you know the hotline number, you call it after five, will it go to that number? You know, just the hotline number, if you have a sewer issue, or water issue, you call this here number after five?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
A lot of the current issues that happen anyway, after-hours, happen with people calling dispatch.
Yeah, going to the police department.
Right, because they don't know who else to call, and, and how to get it. And if you think about a lot of your dog situations, whether they've eaten chickens, or whether they're running after kids, or family members, or whether the dog is just out, and people are worried about it, that's the first kind of phone call to make.
What about the dead animals, if, if they're, they're dropped larger ones? What, who is actually designated to pick those up and remove?
Dead animals is typically the street department comes and picks those up.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I'm glad you said that, Ms. Lacy. See, that's all I do, is listen to what y'all say, and come back. In my community, a woman dealing with chickens, that's getting out her cage, going into the neighbor's yard, and the parish done been out there like four times. Told the woman, if she keep the chickens in the cage, she don't have a problem. The woman next door still having an issue when the chickens get out. So, now that you said that, is, is, is Ms. Cruz in here? See how she gonna handle them chickens? I'm looking for, huh? Okay, 'cause I need to know how she gonna handle those chickens. That's it for me on that, thank you.
Fourteen.
There was a request to add twenty thousand back into election expenses, um, for a possible charter revision election. So this would be a change to the general admission budget of an increase of twenty thousand, which is why it's in that column, if you see.
Fifteen.
There was a request to add twenty thousand into the city planner's salary. We have been without a city planner for over a year now. This is feedback from the headhunters, saying that we are not going to be able to hire this position unless we order, unless we offer a higher salary. The total impact of this twenty thousand dollar increase to the salary, if you consider the additional retirement and, um, social security paid, was twenty-seven thousand, six-hundred, fifty-nine. So that's why you see that number in the column.
Okay. Sixteen.
There was a request to add fifteen thousand back to sidewalks, we had cut that amount from the sidewalks. So this would return the sidewalk maintenance total to forty thousand, which is the same as last fiscal year. So over in your final column, you see a fifteen thousand dollar addition there.
And number seventeen.
This is the last change that was made, um, and this is going back to capital projects, I apologize, it was left off the initial list. Um, but this had been already marked through, and that's why we wanted to be sure it was clear on the amendments, is to take out, um, to actually move the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, and to push it out to fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. Um, this was, the idea was that we would finish the roundabouts that would be there in that area first, and then come in and make any final repairs needed to the street. So that, the financial impact to this fiscal year that we're talking about is to remove two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from the budget. That's why you see the minus two-hundred-and-fifty there.
Anyone else have any questions, anything on the budget? Anyone from the public?
Uh, Lieutenant Daniel Vudrow, Hamlet Police Department, one-twenty South Oak.
Yeah. There you go.
Sorry, can you get closer to it? Uh, I want to remind everybody from the last budget session, when we took the police and the jailers, and we brought them up to a comparable scale, based on the, um, the salary study we had done at the time, that it was mentioned about coming back at a later time to ask about bringing our dispatchers up. I, I love listening to the debate here, back and forth, because I heard more than one time of, radio room would just hand, dispatcher handle it, it'll go to. radio room would just hand, dispatcher handled it, it'd go to radio room, it'd go to radio room. We're, if I'm not mistaken, I could be wrong, I'm not a budget guy, but I think we're three down that's retired recently that hasn't been replaced. We're in the process of trying to get some people. There's some issues back and forth. I believe we have some in the pipeline. I did the, when we did the, the increases back in the last time, we brought jailers up to a starting pay of $35,010 a year, uh, starting pay. Uh, dispatch was brought up a small amount, which we're thankful for, but they're still at $29,790. I would ask that, is there a way, this is a small division, remember, if it's full of 10 people, roughly, of bringing them even with our jailers, which be an increase of $5,220 per person, or starting pay of everybody total would be $52,000 a year. I don't know how our budgets work, but that doesn't seem like a huge increase, uh, especially that I've recently been put over that position, so I get to see a lot more of it now. And there is a lot of stuff been added to them over the last year or two that while may be needed, now that we're moving forward to more of a technology and information age of new and better things to do, as Councilman Wells says, with cameras and things of that nature, having a dog person, now that they're going to just send everything to them, we now get the radio room and the, I mean, I'm sorry, the, uh, water department and all those after-hours calls get diverted to them also, once they close, with a whole lot more of a workload without much more of an increase. I don't think it would be a far stretch in a city's budget to bring them, if I'm not mistaken, 2468 with two swings, 10 people, up to the equivalent of our jailers.
Did you say 52,000 starting?
Uh, no, that would be the total cost to bring up everybody new. Now, as far as scaling up per person, I don't know what that is. That's, Ms. Lacy only does that, scales it out. It would be, uh, $5,220 additional starting. So, it would bring them from 29,790 to 35,10.
Sorry. I thought you said 52,000 starting. I was like, that-
I'm betting we could hire-
Nobody gets that, so that doesn't make any sense. Okay.
Right. No, no. Any questions, sir?
Well, I mean, if we were gonna, if there was a, a pay increase, all the numbers, the dollar amount has to be figured out before we could actually have an item, a budget item. So, I don't know how that could be done tonight. Um-
I don't even mean as far as tonight. I know we're at the end of the budget, but it could be something that could be started for the mid-of-year possibility, because I believe you have the option in January, correct, to amend the budgets and stuff like that?
We can, yeah, we can amend the budget anytime we want.
Right. So, I mean, I'm not saying put it on the line on tonight. I'm saying, let's, let's look at this and actually, is it feasible? Is it viable?
What did the chief say? Did you talk to the chief about this?
He's been on board with anybody getting extra money.
Yeah, but, uh, when I first talked to the chief, he wasn't for the jailers. He wasn't for the clerks. So, you can't sit here, you can't sit here and tell me this now, when he wasn't for them. I'm the one who was fighting for everybody to get a raise. Yeah, so, you, when, when I talked to him, let me say it like this. When I talked to him, he was for the officer getting a raise. The clerks, they had already got a big raise before he became the chief. So-
Be, be that as it may, I don't believe it's my position to speak for the man that sits there himself.
Yes, yes.
But I, I, I will say, I honestly don't care what, what's said in the past, and it shouldn't matter versus the need now versus what the animosity was in the past. Take that out and only look at what the current need is today. I don't, I, whatever happened in the past where he wasn't for them in the past, as you say, if that may be the case, then that's fine. But we're not talking about that. We're talking about here and now. Do they need it? You're saying they need it, so let's work on it. Whether, if you don't believe he supports it, then you support it.
Well, sir, I think, now you know, we have a history. So, when it comes to the raise, did not support it. The ci- the police department would have never got the raise if it wasn't for me.
Absolutely. Enjoyed it.
Yeah. So, guess what? So, I'm all for anybody. And let's put this on the record. I'm for anybody getting a raise, not just one or two. I'm for the majority to get a raise. When it comes to a raise, you can't tell me about two people. You tell me about everybody. And that's when I, that's when I love to get involved. So, I'm not gonna never sit here and look out for one or two people. I'm for everybody getting a raise. So, now we're talking about the raise and we pushed that big issue about the raise. So, they didn't get a raise when all the raises was given out?
I believe they got a 4%, if I'm correct.
Yeah, originally it was 0%. And I pushed it saying that you can't give a 0% raise to some people and a 40% raise to some people. So, I pushed, they need to give more, you can't just give a 0% out. Then it went to 2% minimum, they suggested, and then we, we ended up pushing up to 4%. But it was, some were gonna get 0% at one point in time, and not just the police department as, as a whole. So, yeah, we pushed that. And that, that, we pushed the whole department. And so, I was pushing the, the pay study, uh, for all departments, not just the police department, the water department, the fire department, all departments.
That being said, Councilman, that survey that y'all wanted us to pay for, and we did, that survey said that their salary at the time was above or at the salaries of people doing that position in other areas. So, that's where everybody's salaries in each department were different.
I just wanted to clarify-
It was based on a survey that y'all wanted, which we did.
Yeah. I wasn't, I wasn't anti-raises. I was, I was wanting to correct the problem as a whole for years and doing it right one time, hopefully, by getting the perfection of it. That's where I was. There wasn't anti-police or anything about not getting raised. It was about doing it all right with all departments, where we wouldn't have to keep coming up here every year about somebody not being happy or unfairly treated. So, that was, and getting it all up to par. So, that, that was, that was, for the record, what I was, what my initial truth was. So, yeah.
And we appreciate that, and I hope nothing I said was misconstrued as being against, anybody against anything. My proposal was that now that we have balanced that budget out some and that these new changes have been implemented, is it something we can revisit it? As it was mentioned in the past, that this could be possibly revisited. And as I believe the words were, you can come back at any time and ask for a raise. So, we're just asking for the feasibility of it, and is it something we can look into now that it's not a huge half of a pie we're pulling, now we're pulling a slice, you know, something that's maybe more feasible in a new fiscal year?
But did we not get to the problem by slicing it one at a time? So, now you want us to slice again. I'm not saying I'm against it, but that was the whole argument of why we had to do this massive pay raise, because this one got brought up and then that one got brought up and then got, so we did a study, we paid for a study that said, this is what everyone should be making. Now, if job descriptions and duties are incorrect, according to what the study said, that this, this line of work and these people should be making this, that's understandable. But, and if, you know, more responsibility's been put on someone, their job has changed, that makes sense to me. But I thought we all got to the point where we're like, this is what scientific, you know, mathematical evidence says it should be and based on other areas. Um, you know, if some type of report or other survey says what you're saying, that it needs to be brought up, then that makes sense to me. But I'm not convinced of a, let's, let's go to the slight, let's deal with this slice now, because now we brought everybody up and now we're going to go to this slice, and then we're going to go to this slice, and then, then we're gonna have to refix everything. So, do you see what I'm saying? There needs to be some evidence and some statistics and something behind this, because we have something that says, we're good. We went above what we're good at. So, I need something to tell me why we're not good.
I hear you. I understand. So, if the duties and stuff have changed and get a list and get it presented. I got you. I understand that, that reasoning.
Got a question, sir. How long you been over this department now?
I don't know, about 60 days.
60 days.
Yeah. I was recently put in that position.
No, I, I'm saying that's good. You know what? I would love for you to be my supervisor and, and stand up and ask for a raise for me. That's all. So, you've been in this department for 60 days and you requesting a raise for your department. I think that's good. And so, I'm asking you another question. I see you ready to talk. So, every time we make a phone call to the police department, who receive those calls? Okay. So, every time we call to get a dog removed or a cat removed, dispatch.
Or a water main or sewer problem after hours.
Yeah. And so, and that's why I'm saying this here. I knew how important it was when I first brought it up. But if I got somebody fighting against me in your department, what I supposed to do? And now, you get, you head of the department for 60 days now, and like I said, I respect you for that. You know, everybody deserve a raise. And, and what you talking about now, so look like we finna do another mass raise coming up, because, no, no, ma'am, don't shake your head. They got other folks in other departments that I talk to every day that didn't receive a raise. They got new stuff added on to them. They didn't receive a raise. But you know what? And they right there, they'll tell you. I never approached them about nobody getting a raise. And I'm not gonna approach them tonight about nobody getting a raise. Right now, we got a hell of a budget that we trying to get through. And just like Ms. Gonzalez said, when we cross that road, we'll take care of it. But right now, it's not a time, because they got $143,000 in there now, that they don't know what to do with it. That's what you need to be asking for, because I want part of it in my district, and I'm not gonna tell a lie.
I appreciate the listening, and my intentions was to have it just as a put-up, not to be, I understand we're in the middle of a budget, but there is a time coming up. And as Councilwoman Gonzalez pointed out, that these are things we need, and these are things that I'm sure they are more than willing to work on and get you a justification for this. Um, I would like, if I'm allowed, I don't know what time limit is here, go off and just on a side, CASA, please keep that going. That is not the, the-
Thank you, good sir. We already discussed that, so we're not gonna, because what you gonna do?
As an officer, we-
Yeah, no, what I'm saying, you gonna open up that can of worms and we gonna stay on that another 40 minutes.
Any other questions?
Have you approached the administration for this? And-
Yes.
Mayor, do you want to address this, or is this not time to go there?
I addressed it a second ago. We did the so- study that you asked us to do. We spent the money that was appropriated for it. The study came back. The salary adjustment was not there for you, because you already being paid what other services were being paid in other municipalities, cities and parishes. That's where it stood. That's where we stand. They've always taken the dog calls. They've always taken the water sewer calls. That's what dispatch does.
While you up here, y'all think y'all be able to handle the dog calls if, if it goes to y'all with all the animals now?
Do it now. We've done it for the 21 years I've been here, and I can tell you, to answer your question on whether Janine Cruz is going to handle chickens, those chickens are going to get handled, like Rocky Balboa. I can promise you, she can handle her animals.
So, she's off, who's gonna take her place to do it?
Generally, it's been, as it's been now, I cannot, I'm, I'm a redneck in the country. I grew up in the woods my entire life. I cannot tell you the number of snakes, raccoons, possums, things that I've taken out of people's houses and over my years here, because it's something I enjoy and I know how to deal with them. It's been generally, without this, this new officer now, dispatcher gets on and says, hey, we have a snake call. Anybody on the shift will go to handle that. Nobody has to, you know, by our policy or whatnot. Nobody's gonna say, go deal with a venomous snake. But some of us, more rural people as myself, I enjoy it. So, I would go do it without a problem. I, I, many a snake I've relocated that wasn't venomous, just to get them out. Um, so as far as now with that position, I don't think she would have a problem, A, doing it, or B, finding some other rural person like me on that shift to assist her with it.
Scarlet Rains, 120 South Oak. Um, something that wasn't mentioned as far as the animal control. We have Wildlife and Fisheries, who has a nuisance number for all different types of animals that we can utilize. So, it's not just a concern of, you know, cats, dogs, or somebody calls us about an alligator. We have other options to reach out to that are, um, not a cost to the city. So, just so you all know that. Um, a lot of times now lately, animal control has been like, unless the animal's like severely injured or has bitten somebody, it's really like the only time that they do come out. And, um, for a while, I haven't even called them anymore. Like, we just, we pretty much handle it in-house. So, I don't see where that would be an issue. I really don't. Um, on to the dispatch pay, real quick. I approached you all about this last year. We showed you all the study that we did in-house in the radio room, and there were some conflicting issues with what NOLA HR came up with. We'll be more than happy to provide you all with that. We have tried to send emails and have meetings with the mayor. I understand and I respect you where you stand, that that is what we paid the company to do the survey for. That's it, said done. But, um, we do feel that it was unfair. We got 4%. Everybody else in the department got anywhere from 19 to up. We do have a problem with keeping dispatchers in there now. We, I think it's been three, four years since our last one retired. We've had two more leave. Cannot keep them, cannot get them to come work with us. Lots of more job tasks have been placed on us, especially the past year. We've got all those cameras up in there that we're watching the parks and the mall and subdivisions and, uh, answering a lot more calls than what we're typically have in the past. Um, I welcome you all to come in there and see. Come, come sit with us a few hours. Come to work. Come look at it. Come watch what's going on. And you tell me if you don't think these 10 ladies and gentlemen don't deserve a little more help. And that's really it. I'm not, I've spoke to you all about this. Go back and watch what we said a year ago in this same meeting.
Thank you. Hammond City Council, regular session agenda?
Councilman Andrews, can I make one more? Um, there was one more, uh, suggestion.
I missed it?
I'm sorry. It was, it was not on the sheet, but, um, Councilman Wells and I just spoke about it, and I wanted to make sure it was listed in the public hearing.
Okay.
Um, there was, uh, he would like to move 150,000. It's on page, um, 65 with the drainage improvements. Um, it's number 20 on page 65, which is South Magnolia from Phoenix Square to Second Avenue. It would be moving the 150,000 from fiscal year 2025 into 2024, which is the current year we're looking at. So, that would be $150,000 coming into this current fiscal year that we're talking about. Wanted to make sure that was on there in addition.
No, I had an email on some of the, some of the notes that we had, that I had with you, um, and, you know, uh, with, uh, some projects that were maybe, the money's there already right now, but it might be, you know, um, suggest maybe to do in-house or hire out or whatnot. What, my thing is about the in-house, I just kind of like a, more of a set date. And I know that, that's sometimes tough whenever you got, you know, um, the staff in-house doing variety of different, um, you know, responsibilities throughout the day and all and everything else. So, um, that's kind of where my, my concern was that, um, well, the money's there, so technically, I'm just trying to understand some of, some of the notes, um, and doing you know, like the side, let's see, uh, like some of the sidewalk stuff, um, I'm just kind of a little concerned how, how many, you know, sidewalk people we have in-house and then doing repairs and then doing actual additions. I just, you know, would like more of a time for special, the money's there already, and there's probably enough to get it done. Um, when, when, uh, do we need to do it now or just amend it whenever we get to? I know you were looking at numbers, I think, and-
That's not really a change to the budget that we're trying to approve right now. So, we can continue to look at that. We can get you potentially a schedule and see if that is acceptable to you.
Yeah.
And if it's something that we need to change, we can change that going forward. But that money, you're correct.
Is already there, yeah.
Money is already there.
Okay. And, uh, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. And then the lighting, the lighting, they already have it, the money in the budget for the lighting?
Correct.
Okay.
Because we added that additional money this year into the streetlight budget, it also reflected in an increase in the streetlight budget for this coming year.
Okay.
Um, and that's the money that we use not only to pay to keep the lights on, but we also pay to make improvements. So, to make new installations. And we generally do two to three of those. I know that, um, Councilman Wells had two locations as well, um, to look at. That was, uh, hang on just a second.
Is it Natchez and Washington Avenue?
Is it Natchez and Washington Avenue?
Natchez and Washington Avenue, and then.
Jackson Park?
That's correct.
Okay.
Those are the three that we had talked about. And I think we'll be able to afford those with the money that we already have budgeted, if this all gets approved as is. If not, we can always come back.
Yeah, cuz.
It wouldn't take a, a lot of additional money if we, if, if the cost estimate comes back and needs just a little more.
Cuz I know that I light it to, you know, the one-ninety area, that I just wanted to make sure that was, you know, kind of in the, in the budget right now if we need to have a little extra, cuz it's pretty dark in that area, so.
That's right, the mayor had already had some initial conversations about that area specifically because of, because it is dark.
Yes, yeah. Okay. And it's backing up, yeah, yeah. And just backing up a good, a lot of those houses flood really because of the water just not getting out properly cuz of poor drainage insulation back there, but we took that and, you know, parish annexed that end, I mean, the city annexed it in, so I mean, they really weren't, you know, they had some issues. And so that's kind of what, that's been an ongoing problem, and I just kind of wanted to try to improve that area for the, for the sort of houses, you know, get water in them from here on out, yeah.
On that lighting on Natchez Street, that was approved of last year during the budget. So I don't know how it end up in this year, but it was already approved of last year. Thank you. Hammond City Council, regular session agenda? July, I'm sorry, June twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three, six fifty-nine P.M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye, present, I'm sorry.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Present.
Councilman Leon?
Present.
Councilman Wells?
Aye. Stand for our prayer, please. Most gracious love returned to heavenly Father, we thank you on this evening. We give you the glory and honor that is due your name, Father God, thanking you just for who you are. Thanking you for allowing your darling son to die upon the cross, that we too would have access to the tree of life. Father God, we thank you for your covering, we thank you for your guidance. We thank you, Father God, that you're not the author of confusion. We thank you that everything will be done decent and order, pleasing in your sight, where you would get all glory, all honor, and all praise. We actually continue to bless our city, bless our administration, continue to bless our fire department, our police department, continue to cover them, that they continue to protect and serve us. Continue to bless all of our city employees right now, continue to bless each council member in their district, continue to bless their district right now, Father God. We just thank you for all that you've given us to do, to be put to our hands right now, Father God. And we thank you right now for it all, for that we give you glory, for that we give you honor, for that we give you praise, we give you thanks. In your darling son, in Jesus' name, the Christ, we pray, amen. At this time, for our pledge of allegiance, I ask that all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a, a motion to approve our June thirteen minutes of our meeting, please?
She'll move.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez? Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye. At this moment, I'd like to make an amendment to change into our meeting to go right into our introduction of ordinance, and we'll come back to the final adoption of ordinance at the top.
Introduction of an ordinance to approve a request by Hammond Best LLC owner and JD Klein applicant to rezone two-zero-seven South Cherry Street per survey by Max Bodine, Inc., dated four-twenty-five-twenty-three, from RM-two to MX-CBD, District Two, Lacy Landrum.
This is just for introduction tonight, it would be for public hearing at the next meeting if it is introduced tonight. This is a rezoning request of two-zero-seven South Cherry Street. It was unanimously approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Four of the members were present, one was absent. It is to change from existing multifamily, which is RM-two, to a mixed commercial business district. The reason that CBD was suggested is because that is the property that is just adjacent to the north of this property. Across the street, if you'll recall, there was a home that was demolished in the last year. That is proposed to become additional outgroup of the Stoa Group, which faces right now Morris Street and has a mixed-use building that's both offices and residential. This building that is proposed across the street would be similar. This home right now, the owners are proposing, asking for the rezoning so that they could have kind of a, a family community space there. They would like to have art classes, have activities for children and families to have together, have a small retail shop, and maybe some packaged foods only, not anything prepared, not anything that would require grease trap, not anything that would have a drive-through. So that's what is kind of on the table for them. The reason the zoning was requested is because it is similar to what is there.
Anyone from the public here on this item? Anybody from the council have any questions or concerns on this item? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Introduction number two?
Introduction of an ordinance to approve a request by Mimi McKee Cathrell owner to rezone two-zero-seven South Holly Street per survey by Clifford Webb, dated two-twenty-one nineteen-sixty-two, from RM-two to MX-C with the allowed use of light industrial prohibited, District Two, Lacy Landrum.
This is a similar request to the one that we just did. Again, this would be for introduction only tonight, it would go to a public hearing and a full hearing at the next meeting. This location is two-zero-seven South Holly Street. The, the area around it, both to the north of it, immediately north is another house, but just north of that and kind of makes a U shape around it is the First Guaranty Bank Building, which is the newer building that has their training and IT purposes in it and parking lot areas. So that's the reason that this zoning is slightly different from the one prior. This is also a little bit further from the core parking lots, which are downtown. MXC and MXCBD have different parking requirements. This one does require parking on-site for businesses since it is further from that core area of the business district. What they are requesting is to go from a multifamily, RM-two, to the MXC. MXC does open a lot of options, and so one of the things that was discussed at the planning and zoning meeting was to not allow them the industrial uses. Those are the uses that are really kind of unusual for MXC, and actually, one of the things that we may be changing with regards to that zoning as a whole. But with regards to this specific project, it's a change from that residential multifamily to MXC. It's mid-block, across the street from it to the west side is Thompson Electric. Those are, those are homes, but they are also holding a lot of electrical equipment kind of things. So just to give you a, a snapshot of where this area is. And I'm sorry, the people who are requesting, the owners who are requesting the change do not have a clearly defined business plan yet for what they want to go there. They have suggested possibly a small cafe or a small coffee shop or something along those lines. But that is not firm, they wanted to keep their options open.
Okay, anybody have any questions or concerns? So Lacey, let me ask this question, cuz we ran into this once before. We're not having a clear-cut, defined definition of what they were gonna build on the, on that lot. Me personally, I think that that needs to be put in to their wording when it comes back to us to, for a final vote.
So one of the tools that you could have, or that the Planning and Zoning Commission could have, is an expanded conditional use or a restricted conditional use. In this regard, they're kind of agreeing to some restrictions about the expanded zoning that they're requesting. But you don't necessarily tie unless you're doing an expanded conditional use for a specific business. The zoning is not often tied to the specific business that they're opening. Does open the door to multiple uses and to other options.
And.
And Andre may have additional clarifications to provide there.
But I guess the reason why I'm saying that, Andre, when we run into the problem we had a month and a half ago, I think with the, with the gnarly barley thing, about the building that they, they built on that site across the street, is the reason why I'm asking.
Yes, sir, so, so once you approve a rezoning, any allowed use under that zoning classification is implied. And just because an owner tells you what the present intention of that is, that doesn't mean that can't change. So to Lacy's point, there's two ways to, to address that. One is to take the existing zoning and expand and allow use for a specific purpose by that owner, or to take a zoning and restrict the uses for that space. That's the two techniques you would use to either expand under the existing zoning or restrict under the new zoning. And so here, what they're proposing is to restrict what would be an otherwise acceptable use that could not be used for light industrial purposes. But that would be the, the way you would approach that, Councilman.
Thank you.
And then, is it also true that the overlay's still gonna apply? So the mixed-use commercial does allow apartments, but the overlay restricts them, so the overlay would govern.
Any property that is in a specialized overlay district, the overlay district rules would apply.
What, who district this in?
It's mine, District Two.
District Two, okay. So, but let me ask this here right first, so, Councilwoman Gonzalez, what's your, what's your input on this here?
Well, I, I know that there, I was out of town when they had the planning and zoning meeting, so I didn't go, but I've talked to, there's been some residents who've voiced opposition. My comment was gonna be, Lacy, please make sure both of these people who are applying this are here, so that we can actually hear, and I've always, you know, let me hear what the people have to say. I have, I've talked to, I talked to both of them, cuz I did go to the planning work session. The first one that came up, they had a whole business plan with everything showing what they're gonna do. I think that one makes sense. This other one is a little more vague, and as Councilman Andrew says, I'd really like to know what the, what the true plan is. We've had this previously, I think it was in your district, the gentleman who wanted a restaurant, I was against it, cuz I said, why can't you just use an expanded conditional use? And he said, well, I don't wanna, I don't know what I wanna do totally, and I wanna be locked in on something. So it just makes me pause, and I wanna find out what the true intention, or what the, any anticipated intention can be. So I don't have a total answer for you, I know that was a long response without a clear answer, but I wanna hear from the people before I make my decision.
Okay, and let me tell you why I asked this here. It's not in my district, and I'd rather for a councilman, councilperson to speak about it and sit there and give me their opinion, because a lot of times, just what we end up doing, if something that I'm looking for in my district, you got the other councilmen's talking against something that they don't know what's needed in my district. And that's why I asked that question, because I wanna follow behind you, if you sit here and say it's not needed, I wanna agree with you. If you say you for it, I wanna agree with you, because each councilman up here know what's best for their district. And that's one of the problems that we've been having. You speaking against something that's needed in my district, but you don't know. And that's why, and I like how the president did, when they was reading these items off, they was calling out the councilman area, District One, you know, District Two, District Three. And, and I'm saying, that's what I like to know, and that's what I like to hear, because whatever you say, it's in your area. So that's what I'm agree with, if that's what you want. If you don't want it, I'm agree what you saying you don't want it. So, and that being said, Ms. Lisa, I'm not telling you how to call the names out, but it need to be known that this in District Three, this in District Four, because I can't disagree with something that she need in her area, you know? Even though it might not be good to me, but she says good for her. So we need to start doing this a little bit better, and I think it'll keep down a lot of confusion. Start at high line, because the next person says something, and you agreeing with them, but you don't even know what's going on in the district, because like, I want a sidewalk, he don't want a sidewalk. So I know what's needed for my area, that's all I want, I just wanted to make that clear.
I appreciate that, but I don't need you to agree with me just cuz.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I would like, I mean, we each have to balance what our district and the benefit to the whole city in determining these things. And so I will vote how I think is in the best interest of the whole city, whether it's my district or not.
Well, now that you said that, see, now you opened up a can of worms now, because every time, every time I vote, I'm always gonna do what's best, what I think for the best for the city of Hammond and District Three. So every vote I do, I always do that.
Just if we could, I wanna review the parts, because you may find some of the clues that are helpful to your decision-making in the staff report that is linked up. And also, because we were having confusion about which districts it was in, it was something that we wanted to add to the agenda language. So we, we do put this on both our Planning and Zoning Commission meetings now and on, on the council district too, so the public can know, cuz sometimes you don't, y'all may know exactly where it is, but the public may not know. So we try to add those clues in. The other thing I wanna point out is that in the reports that we try to attach, they try to give you some of those key pieces of information about when a decision was made with regards to that case. So it says what's coming before the council, but it kind of tells you when it may have been before the planning and zoning. And it tells you a little bit about which district it's in, it tells you about how the zoning is and what the future zoning is for that area. It also tells you about what's surrounding it, and then any additional information, such as this one being in that Iowa addition overlay, which we just spoke about. The other things that are in your packet is it's gonna tell you what happened at that planning and zoning meeting. So it's gonna tell you who was there speaking for it, who was there speaking against it, what the commission recommended, how the vote went, and then how the ordinance would read if it was adopted by the city council. The other things that are in the packet include both the application from the owners, the past old maps, the newer maps that may show changes, it shows you photos of the area, it shows you how kind of an orientation on the aerial of where it is, and then the zoning that surrounds it, because anytime we're looking at rezoning, it's important to recognize what is in and around that space. And then the last thing that Amanda just added to our packets, which I think is a big help, and it's small on the screen, but it's easier when you're looking on your phone or on your computer, it shows you the differences between the current zoning and the new zoning. So they're side by side, so that you can see kind of what's being added or what could be, open the door when we're talking about these rezonings. And if there's other things that you would like to see in these packets, we're, we're perfectly open. Everybody has good ideas, you know, just the next day. So if we have other ideas about what to add, we can certainly do that.
All right, thank you so much. Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye. New business number, resolution number one?
A resolution to authorize the mayor to renew a service agreement with Mission Communications for software services in the amount of twenty-five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-seven cents. Guy Paloma?
This is our mission control that monitors our skater bars and all our sewer stations, our water wells and plants, if anything go down, loss of power, anything breaks, it calls us out. We've had this for years, and it's been under $25,000 for years. But this year, we add a couple new stations to it, and the cost of it increased. We tipped it $25,000.
Anyone have any questions on this item? Anyone from the council?
Yeah. So, look, Mr. Guy, how you doing?
All right.
Look, so, explain this here to me again.
We have our skater communication on our water wells, lift station under the plant. Like, a pump goes down, loss of power, any kind of failure, it calls us out on the phone. Instead of us finding it, the next day we come back to work, it calls 24/7. I do this year, we look yesterday, me and Ryan, just since January to just yesterday, we've got almost 80,000 call-outs, I mean, tones to let us know. Something you go out on, something you don't. But just let us know. As soon as the minute it happens, we know within 40 seconds. It's just a more of a monitor, backup on all the stuff.
So, tell me this here, do this link with Wi-Fi or anything? It just...
It goes, it talks straight to mission control. The mission control calls, texts, phones, our beepers, that we have set up, all supervisors, the man on call for that week.
Okay, then. Thank you.
You said you've been with this company for a long time?
We've had mission control since early 2000, yeah.
Okay.
They went, they went up, you said?
No, we just, we've always been under 25. We added two new stations, so there's a new monthly charge, and it had, did have a price increase of 2%. I did call the guy, that's what he's telling me. So, and each year it's going to go up as we add new sewer stations, or I'm going to add two more to the plant. It's going to go up every time you add a...
It's per station?
Yeah. Per, per unit.
Yeah.
It's per, per unit, yeah.
So, what's the price per unit?
I think it's like six something a month. It's only at different prices. Most of them are 62340.
Okay.
I mean, a year. That's for a year to monitor. Yeah, I'm sorry, not a month. But most of, it depends what we put on it. Like, the plant's got more stuff than, than the sewer station because hours more stuff down there. Water wells are different. But majority of them right in 600 a year range. And right now, we have 61 units total throughout the city.
So, it'll tell you when something's going wrong on it?
Immediately. Forty seconds, we get in a page or a phone call. It goes to all the supervisors and the person on call. It tell you loss of power, loss of pressure, loss of pump on the water, whatever it is. It's, it's got a whole list that goes through in their laundry.
They don't offer a way to get a five-year contract for a reduced price of whatever that...
They just charge, charge per, I called, they just charge per unit. I did call, talked the other day, yeah. Space on your unit and what you got on it, what you monitor.
So, with this here service here, we don't have to worry about no sewer bagging up in the house? Is that what you're telling me?
It's like that. It's going, we catch it quicker. I mean, if it breaks during night, we wouldn't find it the next morning without this.
Yeah.
A well goes down, we won't find it the next morning because we don't, we check it once a day. This is 24/7.
All right. Thank you. I have no other question.
Anyone else from the council? Anyone from the public? Pleasure of the council. Thank you, Guy.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
All right. Old business, resolution number one?
A resolution to accept the proposal for recycling services at the 190 facility. Lacy Landrell.
I would ask the council one more time to go ahead and table this item and to table the garbage discussion of the fee of the earlier item. We are still waiting on the price point to come back for once-a-week service so that we can explore all the options related to this. So, I would ask to table this one, even though we kind of know how you're probably leaning, and the other item as well.
Make a motion to table this item?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
All right. Up under old business number one on the first page, page two, the final adoption of an order to increase the monthly garbage fee from $14.08 to $20.98. I make a motion to table this item.
Second.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
All right. We now, we're down to number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance to adopt the City of Hammond's budget for fiscal year 2023 through 2024 in accordance with the procedures of Section 5-03 of the city's charter. Laura Hammond.
Again, this is the final adoption of the FY 2324 budget. We'll, we'll need to vote on the spreadsheet with three additions. On page 64, moving West Morris sidewalks to fiscal year 2425. That's going to push $132,000, $132,000 to next year's budget. Page 65, moving the green lawn drainage to FY 2324, which will increase 61,000 in this current budget that we're going to pass. Page 65, number 20, move the Magnolia drainage from, into the FY 2324 budget, and that will increase at $150,000. If we approve all these changes that have been discussed today with the proposed budget, the ending fund balance would be, for the general fund, $243,402. The ending sales tax balance would be $788,193 if all these are approved tonight.
Thank you.
All right. We have to go back through these line by line. All right. Project number one. From page 64, number two.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
What you're doing is, council, you'd be going through and just making the motion to amend the proposed budget as changed on there. So, that would be, you can go by number with the motion. But what you're doing is amending the proposed budget as, as I noted on those items.
So, this amend?
You're right. No, it's okay to say, I just want to make it clear that as you're going through, what you're doing is, on each item, you're, you're making the motion to amend the proposed budget. Item number one, capital projects, as identified on, on that. So, you can go through and just do motion...
Can you just reference to item number one?
Yes.
Capital project?
That's exactly what Councilman Wells, I think he did. I just want to make it clear that what he's doing is, he's making a motion to amend the proposed budget. Item number one. That's the motion on the table.
Second, yeah.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye. Let me ask a question. We can't just do all these at one time? Huh?
Yeah, I think, I think what... I think what you could do is to take the items by category. Now, that's, of course, you may raise some folks, some council members, who may want to vote individually on them. That's the danger in doing it that way, and in fairness. You could take them by lump items. For example, the page 65 changes, page 67 changes, page 20 changes. But, but the risk is, in fairness to some council members, they want, may want to vote differently on one item compared to another. It may be just as quick, I mean, for those, it sounds like many of them don't have any opposition. You can fairly quickly go, go through these, and then, those that have some question, discuss that individual item. So, for example, the next one would be, you know, a motion to amend the proposed budget, item number, as, as set forth in item number two. Motion second, vote on that one.
Yeah.
Take them in low vote, and you can eliminate one. Like, if you wanted to eliminate number 12 because of discussion, you could take it from one to 12, and from 13 to 17, because I think most of you agree on what the changes may have been. And I could be wrong, and knock all of those out.
Because, because I think number... Yeah, I think number 12, the only one that we had questions about, but I think that was solved pretty much, I mean, that's what I'm saying there. So, you know, the 25,000, the 11,000, that, that's no issue with me. So, I don't think nobody up here have an issue with that, from what I heard. So, I was just wondering, started just reading each one of them again.
How about, how about I do this? Make a motion to amend the budget for items, according to this spreadsheet, items two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11. Now, if someone has a problem with one of those, as a yes vote, you chime in now and say, and say something.
Either one?
Items two through 11.
All right. Well, I second. Nobody has a, okay, I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye.
All right. Now, I'm going to go off-script. Bear with me. We'll stay with capital projects before we get to these other things. We have a couple of things to do on capital projects. So, I make a motion to amend the budget for number 17 on this spreadsheet, which is regarding Industrial Park Road, moving 250 to 2026.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye.
I'm going to make a motion to amend the budget on page 64, which is number one, the West Morris Linden sidewalk project, to move it to 2025. And, at the same time, to move up on page 67, number seven, the green lawn drainage project. 65, I'm sorry. Page 65, drainage project, number seven, move lawn, move green lawn. So, again, moving up Morris, or, I'm sorry, moving back Morris, moving up green lawn.
Second in motion?
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Is that all the capital projects?
I think so.
There was one more...
One more.
That Councilman Wells had proposed to, it was on page 65. It was number 20, which was South Magnolia from Phoenix Square to Second Avenue. It was to move 150,000 into fiscal year 2024, so moving it up a year.
Make a motion to approve? I make a motion. Somebody got to second it.
Make a motion to amend that?
Yeah, to amend the budget, which is, which is described on...
Lacy?
Second.
So, that's for, make sure I'm on the right page?
Page 65, number 20.
Moving it up one year. Moving it up one fiscal year.
Drainage, okay.
So, it brings 150,000 into this budget.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye.
All right. So, now, that leaves us with 13 and 14. 15 and 16. Okay, so...
Let's do easy ones. All the easy ones.
I make a, I make a motion to amend budget item number 14. I mean, yeah, well, 15, let's say 14, general, did we already do the 14? Or 20, Lacy? General emissions, page 20.
I think that's part of the nonprofit issue. I would, I suggest you leave 12 and 13 for us to do separately.
Yeah, I think you just...
These have 14.
14.
14.
Yeah, 14, general emissions, yeah. Page 20.
Election expenses.
For the election, yeah.
I second that motion?
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
And Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Make a motion to amend the budget regarding item 15 and 16 on this list regarding the Building Department, which is adding 20,000 for the city planner, which equals 27,659, and 15,000 for sidewalks.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye.
12 and 13.
I'm going to make a motion regarding 13. Let's see, we'll see where we stand on it. I make a motion to amend, to zero the line item for the animal shelter and to fund the Tangi Humane Society line item with $60,057. Basically, moving Tangi animal control to the humane society.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
I'm staying.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
I think you called me.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
All right.
I think she said aye.
She did.
Yeah, she said aye.
It did.
So, now, we're dealing with number...
Number 12.
12. I make a motion on number 12 that we continue to provide CASA with their services and Crime Stoppers with their services, with the designated amount that's listed, of 25,000 for CASA.
Don't you want to get Crime Stoppers board? You're okay?
I'm going to abstain from...
I think you shouldn't make the motion. Don't make the motion.
Okay. I strike that, somebody else do.
Let's be clear what we were just talking, in case anyone...
I sit on the Crime Stoppers Board of Directors, so I'm going to abstain from the motion and the vote.
I'll make the motion to transfer 25,000 to CASA and $11,107 to Crime Stoppers.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
I'm staying.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Got C left?
I make a motion to leave the nonprofit funding in as $143,893.
Second.
Again, we're not awarding anything, we're just putting money into a line item.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
No.
No other amendments? Make a motion to approve the budget as amended.
I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon? Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Reports, Mayor?
I remember this is the Fourth of July weekend, so stay vigilant, stay hydrated. Our Fourth of July fireworks will be in Zoomary Park. Five o'clock, we have inflatables for the children, we have a DJ. Nine PM will be the fireworks. We are talking about, and I'd like your input, on allowing the food trucks. We are talking about, and I'd like your input, on allowing the food trucks in the park for this event, if they'd like to be there. Is there any opposition to that from the board? So, um.
According to the rules that we made?
Yeah.
If, if anybody is interested, they just need to schedule that with, um, back calling City Hall. So if you know of different folks who may be interested, Lisa Lambert is kind of organizing our event and lays out the space, makes sure everybody has what they need and that they can fit in.
So they need to contact Lisa?
That's correct.
Okay.
Or they can just call City Hall and Alma or Lisa will get them to the right spot. So we just want to make sure that they have a space reserved for them.
I think that's a good idea to be able to, uh, showcase that service during that time as well.
And the other reason that we do that is because so many of our restaurants are closed altogether um, to celebrate the Fourth. So it does allow for families who are coming into the park and in the vicinity to, to be able to get food and everything.
Any council reports?
Um, Lacey, did, did you get an update on that speed hump yet on about a what, what month or so?
I asked them for a timeline and I do not have that yet.
Barnes, over there on Barnes?
Yeah. Um, I did tell them to get in touch with Mr. James as well. So as soon as I have that timeline, I hope it'll be in the morning, but I don't have that timeline yet.
And just coordinate though with Mr. James because I had another one.
Placement, right?
Yeah, I had another one that went somewhere else that kind of, they didn't call anybody and he dropped it, which is whatever. I'm glad it's there, but I just want to make sure since he kind of knows exactly where to put it for what people, you know, on that street that would be happy with it. So it'd be good. And I sent the number in on the, when I sent in the sheet. That was all signed, so just coordinated with him on that. And then, um, they were asking me about the, um, the railroad track.
Smoke, we're in a meeting, smoke jumper, we're in a meeting.
The, uh, the railroad track sidewalk, the little deal, is that starting in the next couple of weeks or so?
It should be. We already gave notice, um, that one is being performed by the contractor. And we already gave notice, Chuck had given notice to the railroad actually a couple of weeks back. I think the contractor got pushed out because of weather delays or supply delays. I'm not sure which, but it should be within, I would think, the next two weeks, hopefully.
Yeah.
Or the next month.
Okay.
We have already given all the notices that are required.
Thank you.
Uh, to piggyback off Sam, uh, I need a follow-up on the Speed Hump on Magazine Street. A request was put in for that one as well. And also, Lacey, uh, the follow-up on the light on N A James? I think it's the four hundred block, if I'm not mistaken.
Councilman Andrews, do you remember who the contact person is for that Magazine Street? Speed, or marked on the page?
It should be on the page. If not, I'll get that information to you.
Pete, one other thing was the, uh, what's the status of those extra arm length for that church street? Um, you know, west side of church, uh, I think, is that in the process right now? It's, it's in the, there's a ticket in there somewhere that's, okay. Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I'd like to get an update on these cars. These abandoned cars on the lot, when that process going to start?
They already are enacting several of them. Um, so if you have specific locations or addresses that you want to turn in, feel free to either email in my direction or call them. You can call and give us a list. Joey Malazo is heading up that effort in code enforcement, but they are, they are rolling.
Yes, they are, Devon. It's amazing that you say that because I got a phone call about it. The lady was upset about it. And then I told you can't have it on both sides. Either one, you complaining about cleaning up your neighborhood and then the car ain't used, been used in fifteen years.
Yeah.
Councilman Wells, I think there's that, um, the old broken down tree trimmer that I think is in your area over on Hewitt, um, that I asked them to take a look at as well because that one has been there for?
Long time.
Long time.
That's a long time.
Yeah. And I want to bring up, uh, it's like every time I'm up here, someone is dying or getting killed. And I'm saying that I had a friend this weekend, you know, losing his life. Uh, we called him fresh, Andre is his name. And when council, when the people were speaking about council, that's why I say, I wanted to main people been talking about since the coronavirus. Everybody is different. Everybody not the same. It may seem like a lot of people depressed, so we never know what nobody going through. So we have to be careful. I'm not the same person I was three years ago. I might act like it, but you don't know what's going on with me. And I'm saying this here, I'm never planning on hurting myself, but I don't know what might happen. And that's how real it is. So we quick to jump, but we better be careful how we jump and how we approach people. I'm not going to treat you the same I treated you three years ago because everybody going through something. So I'm saying that to say, we have to be mindful how we talk to people. I used to blow the horn when you stop at a stop sign and not moving fast enough at a red light. But guess what? Now I have to sit there and wait till you decide to move. And, and I'm saying this here, we truly have to be careful on how we treat people because the city of Hammond is really hurting. The juveniles, they doing a whole lot. And I hear law enforcement talking, but we have to get it under control because we, it happening in my neighborhood. But I promise you, it going to move to your neighborhood. The little carjacking, you know, I'm starting to hear about this here. So all these little things that's going on in Baton Rouge and New Orleans, it's coming to Hammond. It's coming to Hammond. And I forgot, I should have talked about this during the budget. We talked about the Fourth of July, but Juneteenth, I like to put some money on the side for Juneteenth